That's good. You're a talented guy. Well, good morning, everybody. It sounds like we are live, so I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you'd all please rise. We have Pastor Jeff Chitwood with Anchor Christian this morning to lead us in prayer. Good morning. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Let's pray. Dear God, we come today and we thank you for the blessings we have of this day and the life that you've granted. We pray for wisdom for those who lead the city and the state that you will grant them insight and direction. That it's in accordance with the best for everyone. I pray, Lord, that you will protect our citizens from the virus and that during this time, may all take precautions that are needed so that we can get through this, just guide us and direct us and all of that. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Councilman Jesse Purdon, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Well, good morning, everybody. Happy Wednesday after our August primary. And we're going to start with public comment on agenda items this morning. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time.
And if you're here speaking on any land use petitions that are before the council, I ask that you wait until those actual items get called because they are public hearings.
Morning.
Good morning.
My name is Chris Libertor. I'm the VP of Sales with Pyrotechnical Fireworks. I am also a board member with the Florida Festivals and Events Association. We are fortunate enough to be able to pull off a small version of our annual conference at the Hyatt Regency Coconut Point. Obviously, it's been a tough year for the event industry. We're glad to be able to pull this event off safely. My company is donating a small pyrotechnics display at the property this evening for our members and the guests of the hotel. And so we have gone through the permitting process. I was just here to answer any questions if anyone had any concerns. So just wanted to introduce myself and thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? I've got my timer right here. You ready? Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor City Council. My name is Robert Allen. I'm the president of the Colony at Morton Grove. Just to be clear, this is for on any agenda item, correct?
Yes, sir. That's right.
Okay. This is regarding the stormwater utility. Before we get to that, I want to congratulate and acknowledge everybody involved in the bioreactor with the recognition we just recently received. When the stormwater utility came up, I attended a number of the city council meetings for the presentations. I also attended a number of workshops. At that time, I was in favor of the stormwater utility. And I'm here again to tell you that I am still in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Ogle, Carne St. Corp. Benita Springs Golf and Country Club Civic Association. I'm also here to speak on the stormwater utility fee. As I'm sure that the council is aware, we need a dedicated funding source in order to apply for specific grants for stormwater remedies. Some members of the council believe that the fee is too high, and I have heard that the $50 yearly assessment is being unfair. As I understand the ordinance, the $50 amount is the highest amount charged, and it is also a sliding scale based on lot size and impervious surface. $50 per year equates to less than $4.20 per month. In looking over my tax bill for last year, Lee County got about $85 per month. The city got about $17.28 per month. Public schools got $142 per month. I don't have children in the schools, but I support that tax because children are our future. I pay for hyacinth control, and I don't have a hyacinth problem. I don't use the Okeechobee levee or the West Coast Inland Water Navigation District, but it helps our state and not to mention the fire district and the library fund. These are essential services that we need to maintain our quality of life. The point I'm trying to make is that we pay for services in our taxes that may not benefit us directly at this point in time, but are necessary for our quality of life. The stormwater utility fee should be left in place at the current funding level to protect our city now and help provide stability in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Thanks for being here. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Council members. For the record, Dwight Estman Paradise Road area. I'm going to kind of follow up with what Barbara said. I want to encourage all of you to vote to keep the stormwater utility fee the same as it was this year. My house has probably about 4,500 square feet of impervious area, counting the patios and the parking area. I have an acre of land. Probably 75% of that land is at the same level that it was before I built the house. So I think the water from my roof and driveway probably is contained on my lot. On that basis, I might be opposed to the fee. But I'm in favor of it because I'm affected by the water that flows from the north. I've experienced street flooding from just heavy summer rains. I don't live in an area with an HOA that tries to control water flow, and I don't pay HOA fees. But we need this fee because we need to buy land for stormwater retention and to ensure that we don't pollute the rivers and streams that flow into the bay. We need the fee so that we can maintain the city's water retention systems that we already have. And to the best of my knowledge, there has been no work done in my neighborhood since I moved in there in 2007. We need to collect the fees and we need to put them to good use now. We need the fee and the potential for HOAs to save thousands of dollars if they can prove that they control the quality and quantity of water that comes off their land. Those of you who live in gated communities already pay thousands of dollars in fees. But we don't know if your systems work. To get that rebate, we will know for sure that your systems are working. So we're just going to find out if you've been doing what should have been done all along. Finally, some are going to claim that residents can't afford $50 a year. Seriously, $4.17 a month doesn't buy you a meal at McDonald's. And many homeowners are going to pay less than that if they live in a condo or small.
Thank you. More time. He's still got a minute and 40 seconds.
I'm sorry?
You still have a minute and 40 seconds.
Thank you. My wife and I live on social security and a small pension. We're not rich, but we can afford this $50 because it's important. And one last point. The stormwater utility fee finally makes commercial property owners pay their fair share for water management based on the total amount of impervious area on their property. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Shelley Anderson. I'm here to talk about the stormwater utility fee also. If as a city, we say that water and all the issues surrounding it are a priority, then this is a great inexpensive way for all of us to help fund solutions to the myriad issues and problems we face. The fee will raise close to $2 million a year to be used for stormwater-related maintenance and improvements. I live in District 2 on the river. I have been flooded twice, once severely. Some people would say, well, of course, I'm in favor of the fee. But I would say not everybody that was flooded after Irma lived on the river. Neighborhoods all over Benita were flooded. I have heard that some residents can't afford the fee. I don't know who these people are. I have talked to a number of people in District 2, and not one of them has complained about it or thought it was outrageous or too expensive. It comes to $14 a day at the most. If you're a condo or a mobile homeowner, it's less than $50 a year. We all pay for things, as Barbara said, in our real estate taxes that we don't use. But it's about what's best for our city. That's why I'm in favor of continuing the stormwater utility fee. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the zoning land use items. Derek, you want to tee us up here, please?
First item this morning, the first reading of a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs to rezone 67.5 plus or minus acres from commercial plan development CPD to a mixed-use plan development MPD to allow for a maximum of 482 multifamily dwelling units inclusive of assisted living facility and 165-room hotel at a maximum building height of 65 feet or six habitable floors and up to 315,000 square feet of commercial retail at maximum building feet of 55 feet or five habitable floors at the northwest intersection of Benita Beach Road and Benita Grand Drive, Benita Springs, Florida 34135, providing for an effective date.
Great.
As it's a first reading, presentations are at your pleasure.
Sure. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to second reading.
Move to second reading? Okay, there's been a motion to move to a second reading and a second. I think I heard about three voices, so a first and a second. We'll let the statistician pick whose voices they heard first. Counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Great. Item B, Derek.
Okay, again, you have first readings and two public hearings on transmittal of two ordinances to the Department of Economic Opportunity. The first is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, providing for adoption of a comprehensive plan amendment relating to downtown redevelopment area, amending the future land use element and future land use map series, transportation, conservation, coastal management, housing and capital improvement elements, providing for intent, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And the second ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, providing for adoption of a comprehensive plan amendment to amend the future land use element and future land use map series, transportation element and transportation map series and housing for intent, providing for intent, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, Derek, could you break that down for the folks listening at home who maybe didn't have the benefit?
Sure, we have, and staff and Dr. Bannon will give a brief presentation, but we have two ordinances, two transmittal package for you. The first is the downtown plans that have been discussed earlier in the year. The second is a series of general amendments that have been, or I'll say it's just glitch fix situations. And as well, in the report that Dr. Bannon, FGCU, put together, was a request initiated by conversations with Don Kanikowski out on Hickory Island about an optional package that if you choose to adopt, we can transmit as well, which takes a snapshot of certain commercial properties on Hickory Island and establishes separate land use categories for those properties.
Okay, so did she? Where is that part, that part that Don's talking about?
It's actually in the report in your backup, and it'll be listed, I think, as other land use items. And what it does is it creates two new land use categories, Hickory Island Neighborhood Commercial and Hickory Island Multifamily. Basically, these are, these are properties that there's been concern over years about whether they, what their redevelopment potential is and the ability of them to aggregate sites. And what Dr. Bannon did was go in, do some research on the exact entitlements, and basically tailor-made future land use categories to allow them to continue under their existing entitlements, but not to increase or intensify in any way.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay. Counsel, any other questions at this time or watch the presentation?
No.
Great.
So I'm, I'm ready to go. Can you confirm that you hear me?
Yes. Loud and clear. Louder than me, maybe, which is hard to do.
So maybe Addison can turn the audio down. I'll try not to talk too loud. So thank you for accommodating me over Zoom, and I've been watching you via your live TV so I can see a little bit in the room. What I want to do is just kind of walk you through the amendments. Some of these you have already heard. And so this is a continuation of that conversation, and I will also walk you through some of the thoughts about Little Hickory Island. So again, this is the transmittal meeting for the downtown amendments and the other cleanup amendments that we had discussed previously. So there's really four areas that I want to talk about today. One is the downtown vision and the map overlay. The second is amendments to what we were calling the other amendments, which was what counsel had directed us to do previously, is to look at the first three elements of the comprehensive plan. So the future land use element, the transportation element, and the housing element. What you have before you in your package, though, is there's more elements because the downtown vision and map overlay, a lot of the wording changes spilled over into some of the other elements. So I'll cover those as I go through the presentation this morning. So with the downtown, so we've had this conversation before. We created at council direction and consistent with the zoning, or the, sorry, land development code revisions, created a downtown district. The majority of those amendments are in the land development code, and those are related to downtown. So there was a lot of amendments related to a name change from the old 41 redevelopment overlay to downtown district. So a lot of the straight through and underlying you'll see are related to name change. It added a vision for the downtown district and then a downtown district map, as you can see shown. It struck the outdated provisions for the sub-districts. So previously, that old 41 redevelopment overlay had quite a few sub-districts with pretty different regulations in those sub-districts. So it removed those sub-districts and created this vision for the whole downtown overlay. Then it removed options for bonus density, and I'll talk about that in a second. And it removes a previously unadopted reference to a transportation concurrency exception area. So that old transportation concurrency exception area was really no longer relevant when we went in and looked at the street provisions and the land development code changes for downtown. And that TCEA was also, had not been ever adopted. So that was removed from the language. There's two areas that we are going to, at the end of the, end of the presentation, we'll want your feedback. We had talked with counsel previously about having a density maximum in the entire downtown district. And that density maximum we talked about was at 20 units per acre. What that does is it just sets the maximum in the whole downtown overlay and leaves the specific provisions to the land development code and the form-based code. So it allows for some flexibility and as you develop your downtown, how that, how that puzzle pieces fit together. And then the other thing that we had previously talked about, which was the Terry Street Subdistrict options. For now, we left the Terry Street Subdistrict language. It's something that we could leave in there or remove. And that's something that if we leave it in there, it's not going to cause any harm. But it is in that downtown overlay right now. So the other related amendments to downtown, and there's quite a few amendments or elements, excuse me, that are really more or less, I would say, in terms of changing the name. So in the transportation element, we removed the reference to that old transportation concurrency exception area. The transportation element created new provisions for the downtown design, and it had several name changes to downtown district. In the housing element, there's a table, density table. We just mirrored that density table to reflect the changes in downtown. And it removed the density bonus that I just referred to. And then there's name changes to downtown district. And then in the conservation and coastal management element, it created some flexibility in the CMA for downtown, for the downtown. As we had discussed previously when we did the state required amendments, that CMA, a portion of the downtown lies in that CMA. So it made amendments to the, to the area that talked about public investment in the downtown area. And then again, there was name changes. And then capital improvements element, we removed the reference to the transportation concurrency exception area and did name changes to downtown district. I'm just going to continue on and talk about the other updates. I'm happy to go back to these slides if you want to take a peek at them. So the other related amendments that we were asked to cover, which was in the future land use element, the transportation element and the housing element. There's quite a few cleanup that was required. And that in part is because there was several maps that had not been updated in lots of years. So in the future land use element, there was updates to all of the map series that you see on the presentation. So the future land use map and annexations, there was updates made to that. The potable water wells and wellhead protection area map was updated. The wetlands, seagrass beds and water bodies was updated. Soil associations, flood zones, flood plains, and historic structures. So all those maps were updated, which was a significant lift because some of them had not been updated for 30, 30-plus years. So we feel like those got pretty consistent, and you have a lot more data now to work with. There was a lot of corrections of typographical errors and updated references to documents and data sources. I'll talk about the annexation-related changes as well. And these areas that you're seeing on the map now, there was two areas that had been annexed. So the first was what we kind of call the little finger. And in those little fingers, those areas had not been brought into city land use, future land use categories. So they had remained Lee County future land use categories, which the downside is the city didn't have a lot of control over how those land use categories worked best. So they were still in the city lands, but they were using a previous Lee County land use designation. So, and then the map on the right of your screen is city annexations. And then the map that is showing there is all of the previous ordinances where the city had annexed that property but had not yet brought those areas into a future land use category of the city. So with the, those city annexations, what we did is created, in some cases, land use category that was similar to what, or put those annexations into a land use category that was very similar to what had existed in Lee County. And in this map, what you'll see is the resulting future land use map. I will point you back to the, to the little, to the little finger up at, to the top of the, to the top of the screen. And in that area, you'll see a lot of white. And that is areas that we had, that still remain with the Lee County future land use category. The purpose for that is to allow any private amendments that are coming through the opportunity to propose a future land use category. And then we also direct you to the right-hand side of the screen, which is the former BG Mine property. That was also reflected as conservation fringe. And the other areas with this map and with the backup documents, we would bring them all into the remaining, all into the future land use categories of the city. With the transportation element, we had spoke with counsel about making a few changes. Again, there's several updates to the future land use map series. For example, the bike ped long-range plan was updated, existing in future transit routes. The new, there was a new long-term, long-range transportation map that we updated that really reflects the city's priorities. We removed a lot of outdated references to streets and roads that were no longer planned. We updated the element for complete streets, safety and livability. And we created the option, not the language, but just the option for a future mobility plan and fee should the city choose to pursue that. And updated a lot of references to documents and data sources. And then in the housing element, there was really no additional changes that were needed beyond what was required for downtown. So we didn't delve into that element. Then the last thing I would just cover is the other issues related to Hickory Island. So there was a citizen request with Hickory Island that we look into the commercial future land use. And the map on the left shows you kind of the area that we're talking about. What you'll see is the properties in red. Those were designated commercial. So there was a request for us to look into what those would look like if we kind of reflected their current use. The map on the right is kind of what we're calling an after. And this is an option for the city if they, if they would like to pursue this. We created, as Derek had talked about, two land use categories that are specific to Little Hickory Island. One is multifamily residential, and the other is neighborhood commercial. And so in your packet, you also have a table of all of the properties, all of the strap numbers that are in, in those areas that we're talking about where it says areas of future land use changes. And we went back and did the analysis to see that there was, what was on the ground and what, and what existed to reflect what might be appropriate future land use categories. And so the language that was developed, and you don't need to read all this on the screen, but we developed a Little Hickory Island Neighborhood Commercial. And that is, again, reflective of what's appropriate there on Little Hickory Island. And then the second was Little Hickory Island Multifamily Residential. And again, created a land use category that was similar to what was there on the ground. So that, with that, just a quick sort of review of timeline. We had our LPA meeting before that, right before the pandemic, March 12. And we are now at August 19 with council transmittal. What we would anticipate is, you may recall, we need at least 30 days to, for the state to review, which brings us to a tentative council adoption date of October 7. And with that, I'll just ask for any questions or feedback. I'm going to stop the presentation just for now so that we can have a discussion.
Great. Thank you very much. Very thorough. Sounded good. Amy, I'll start with you if you have some questions.
I just want to thank Dr. Bannon and her team for the work that she's done. And I particularly like the process by which you had the special categories. And I particularly like the process by which you had the special categories for Hickory Island, which have been a continual problem and source of conflict when we're trying to do things. So I think that is a really good solution to just put in writing the reality of what's on the ground and to go forward there. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Jessie?
Dr. Banyan, I'd like to thank you very much. This is very thorough. It's great. I think the, the visible designations are, I think these are going to be helpful. And from my own knowledge and maybe for people listening, what was the catalyst that got us to actually making these changes?
So there was several, several different initiatives. In, in 2015, that we had prepared, 2015, 2016, we had prepared your evaluation and appraisal report. And at that time, there was several amendments that were required to be made by the state. And at the same time, we did an analysis of your comprehensive plan. So we made those state required changes and those were completed last year through a couple different phases. And then about 2017, the council had also asked that we look into those first three elements of the future land use, transportation and housing. Part of the reason is because that is, those are kind of the main elements of your comprehensive plan that really will direct policy. And we had also discovered at that time that a lot of the changes related to annexation had not been reflected in the comprehensive plan. So that's kind of what generated a lot of the work that you see in front of you. And in the review, it was pretty clear that those map series were woefully out of date.
I really appreciate it. I think you did a great job. So once again, FGCU delivering for us. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jessie. Laura?
Again, thank you, Dr. Banyan, for, again, another thorough job. Appreciate it.
Wonderful, thank you. Chris?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I just had a question about the Little Hickory neighborhood commercial. Will that allow what's there to be rebuilt or can it be changed, things like that?
Yeah, that's the idea. And I think maybe Derek can weigh in on that a little bit, a little bit more.
Sure. I mean, we've had a, and part of, part of the issue out there has been, it's not just the comp plan, and, and we will try to flush this out possibly more between transmittal and adoption, but you know, you, you have the policies that we have with respect to our coastal management, their implications. So just because you may have, say, a commercial land use category on the island, doesn't mean you have the same development potential on the island that you would on, as a commercial piece on Benee Beach Road. So what this does is really sort of tailor-made these, these land use categories to what those rights are. They're still in interplay with the zoning and we're going to maybe flush out what those other policies in the coastal management apply. But it should help property owners who either own these properties or are looking to buy these properties to understand what their rights are coming in, rather than trying to unpack history and maybe just looking at the top-line comp plan provisions, saying, oh, I can build, you know, a 75-foot tower out there, which that's not the way it would work because of your, your density restrictions, because of the coastal management area. This, this sort of gives someone a snapshot to be able to look at and say, this is, this is what my entitlements really are.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to adversely affect like docs or?
No, no, there's no, there's no, there's no building regulation impacts.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Fred?
I want to compliment Margaret Banyan again on the good job she did. And one question, I'm assuming that the people in Little Hickory Island that have been concerned about this are reasonably satisfied with this as best or the only solution to resolve their issues?
Yes, I had an update call with a couple of the key players on the island yesterday. There was a little confusion because of that, that outlined area of land use changes, that they thought that maybe change is going to other categories. So I just, for the record, that outline is just to draw your attention to the, to the area changes because they're fairly small parcels. It has no regulatory effect. And we, we will continue to engage with them if there's additional clarifications that are required during the transmittal process. But this was something that the council wanted done fairly quickly, and so we are trying to move on that action. So if, if the Hickory Island changes are something the council wants, before you open up the public hearing, I would ask that you move to add those from the report into the amendments. They would actually go as amendments to the second ordinance. That's up for consideration. And then we will actually transmit those Hickory Island items as well.
Derek, for the, and certainly no secret at all, everything we do is for the public at the taxpayers' expense. So if you could just maybe give a recap of our conversation yesterday with some folks from the beach, with Don and Marty Roach, I just, we've gone round and round and round for years and we're getting so close. I don't want to assume anything. I don't want to overlook anything. I just would like your and possibly Arlene's recap of our call yesterday.
Sure. There was, I mean, we, we had a follow-up call yesterday because there was, we did receive some emails, result, there was, there was perceived confusion about some of these changes. When we had the conversation yesterday, once, once we had sort of isolated that, that confusion, that there were no changes to the general multifamily and other districts, say, all other districts on the island remain the same. Now, all those districts are restricted in various ways because of our coastal management element, which often gets confused with coastal high-hazard area. But those restrictions still apply to those properties. What these properties are is they reflect the actual on-the-ground conditions. So what we were concerned about is any, anytime you make changes that are broad, broad strokes, you, you risk that property owners out there will say, well, you've taken away entitlements. And so before we made any clarifications or changes to the, to the island, we want to make sure that Dr. Banyan very thoroughly looked at the entitlements, looked at the developments that are currently in place, and basically said, okay, this is what you have out there, this is what you're entitled to. And if, looking at your existing future land use, whatever entitlements you may have had under that, you still retain. So in a sense, all we are doing is classifying these properties as what they are separate, but they're not being downzoned or de-intensified. The only provision that is before you today that may, may affect intensification out there is that you would not have the ability to aggregate lots. So if you bought two or three of these properties, you wouldn't be able to combine them, and as a result of combining them, increase intensity on the property. That is something that we are specifically prohibiting here.
Right, right. And just for the record, and this isn't, Don, if you're listening, this isn't certainly to put you on the spot, it's just to make it public so that people understand possibly what some of the confusion was, because you've been a steward for the beach and the city for a long, long time. Peter, Arlene and Derek, thank you for your time and service to our city. I've attached the proposed map. The reason I thought you were expanding the area beyond the three red areas was due to the dotted line indicating that was the quote-unquote "area" of land use changes. And does that make sense to you, Dr. Banyan?
Yeah, the, that, that dotted line was because when you look at the map, it's hard to see the properties that, that we were talking about. So that dotted line would not appear in the future land use map. And so it's, it was limited to just the, the changes are limited to just the, the future land use categories on Little Hickory Island that are currently now commercial. So those are the only properties that we were, that we are talking about here. So again, those are existing right now as it stands before any amendments may be made, those properties that were designated as commercial.
Right. And then it said there was also confusion due to the close quote-unquote color tones of the existing medium-density multifamily and the new proposed quote-unquote Little Hickory Island MF residential. If they could be made a little more of a contrast, that would be great so there's no confusion. Does that also make sense?
Yeah, and we can, we can work on those colors. We want to make sure that the colors are consistent with kind of the, the standard kind of GIS standards. So we can work on the colors. And I think the suggestion, if council wants to move forward with the changes to Little Hickory Island, we can work on the colors between transmittal and adoption, and that's not a problem.
Okay. In addition, as you mentioned, if section E of policy 1.1.28 and section C of policy 1.129 can be tightened up a little, indicating that the land use category shall also comply with other provisions in the comprehensive plan, including, but not limited to, the coastal management area, area, my accent coming out there, sorry, management area, and barrier islands found in policy 5.1.1, 5.1.4, and goal one, objective 1.8, to name a few. Any of that give you any heartburn?
I don't have any particular issue with that. I think I want to make sure with Mr. Theriak and Mr. Bruni that that's, that, that would be something that they would also recommend. We haven't had that conversation yet, but I think also that's something that we could address between transmittal and adoption if council wants to move forward.
Okay. And thank you, Derek.
Well, all I'll just say is that, you know, what one of Don's concern is that while the comprehensive plan is, is meant to be read in total together, sometimes, you know, it seems that some, there's an impression that people read some policies to the exclusion of others. There are provisions in the two categories that Dr. Banyan created that say that, you know, these redevelopment has to occur in compliance with the rest of the comprehensive plan, specifically calls out the coastal management element. I don't have an objection to what, what Don's recommending. The only thing, we, we will continue to look at that issue because I would not want to cite, necessarily cite specific comp plan policies and have that be read as to the exclusion of others. So however it gets done, it, just to make sure that, I, I think the goal for both parties is the same. But it, again, it's another transparency issue. It makes it that much easier for anyone who owns these properties to understand that they may be self-limited by other policies in the comp plan. They shouldn't just read it and say, well, that's all I need is this one paragraph. So we'll continue to work on that.
No, I appreciate that. So based on this latest email that I read to you, any issues at all, no matter how small, no matter how big, microscopic, perceived, shield sword argument, looked at this way, looked at the other way, what if, what about, possibles, anything else we need to discuss?
Not, not on this issue.
Dr. Banyan?
I don't have anything else on this issue.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move, move to transmittal, including the Hickory Island options.
Okay. There's been a motion in a second?
I believe we actually may have some public comment on this.
And now we have some public comment for further discussion. Welcome. Sorry to blow you out with my voice, and I believe, I'm trying to talk soft, believe it or not.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Alexis Crespo with Waldrop Engineering. I want to just start by echoing some of the comments from council, but this has been a great effort by staff and Dr. Banyan and the FGCU team, a culmination of many years of hard work and a great package that they've brought forward this morning. Our firm had the, really the privilege of working with them on this in some of the early phases, so certainly here in support of, of the amendment being brought forward. I am here representing Mr. Don Malinick, who's seated here to my right, as well as Rhonda Brewer, who's with Land Solutions, LSI Inc., who's the brokerage firm actively working with Don. He owns 175 acres as well as other properties throughout the city, but the 175 acres is depicted on page 29 of the package. The property was annexed into the city before Mr. Malinick purchased the property, so it was annexed in '08. He purchased around 2013, 2014. Approximately 100 acres are in the city. They still retain Lee County future land use designations. The remaining areas that are blue on this exhibit, about 75 acres, are still in Lee County. We've been, our firm has been retained to do in-depth due diligence in, in efforts to bring forward a comprehensive annexation, comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning to the city of Benita Springs so that he can control his destiny and bring forward a thoughtful amendment based upon data analysis in order to incorporate these properties onto your future land use map with city designations. We understand the property should not be in Lee County future land use in perpetuity. What we are requesting is just the time to go through that privately initiated amendment process, putting on the record that there is an intent to move forward within the next year or so with those applications, and just respectfully request that this property be removed from the future land use map amendment before you today, similar to how some other properties have been treated, the ones in white on the map that are moving through the process on their own. So we would just, again, like to control our own destiny for this one piece of the amendment before you today.
Thank you.
I certainly, I certainly understand Mr. Malinick's concern. I wasn't aware of it before the meeting. There's no submittal at this time, and what I, my concern would simply be that a lot of these properties, including some of the ones we've been in litigation with in recent memory, have been properties we've been held to Lee County comprehensive plan policies, mainly through the city's own inaction to, to make these changes over the years. And that they haven't been caught in previous year amendments is, was pretty amazing. But now that we have updated GIS and better technology, it's a little easier to catch these things. So I would think that maybe, and I'll defer to Dr. Banyan on this, I would think we would probably want to make these changes, at least get them processed without any, without any penalty to Mr. Malinick if he chooses to submit an application. In other words, I would, I would not want to prejudice his applications in the future for a future land use amendment, which is a legislative change and his right as a property owner to seek. If we adopt, say, in October, these amendments and it comes into the comp plan and then he has an application in November, I would not want to say that our community development department or this council should say, well, we're not looking to change that property because we just, we just added it in at this point. What I'd be more fearful of is if, for some reason, the privately initiated petition doesn't move forward next year, and then we go a couple of years before we revisit this issue. So you can go either way on this, but I would certainly see, wish there, I wish there was a third, third option in between. It doesn't, it doesn't look like they're going to be submitting before October. Okay.
Well, and, you know, not to belabor it, but I think this obviously is important. I mean, I don't want to, disrespect is not the right word. I don't want to diminish what you just said, Alexis, at all in any certain way. If we, if we're looking to pass something in totality, in finality, forevermore, moving forward, we can't have these dangling cases. Am I looking at that wrong?
No, you're not.
We can have dangling cases, but I don't think I would choose, for one, to have dangling floaters out there that could come at some point. Yes, you said this, but I meant that, it was my point earlier. What about if you read it this way, if you look at it that way, you have a new council, you have a new set of circumstances. I think we're looking to get rid of that, aren't we?
Yeah, I, I think that, I think as a broad brush moving in all the annexed properties that have been, have been converted to Lee County, comp plan is a good idea. I think it protects the city. I think it, it gives some certainty to, not only the property owners out there, but, but adjacent property owners, because we have properties that are operating under Lee County rules. And not that these comp plan policies that the city are implementing are that drastically different, but it does create a distinction and a distinction that is difficult for our, our staff and our, our, our community to, to interpret when it's somebody else's rules. If there was a petition pending, then I, I would say there'd be something to do, but it's very difficult for us to, to call this property out, give it some kind of interim status when we don't know what's going to be provided on it.
No, and I just want to repeat myself, this is zero meant to be hardball. It's not, but it's hard to operate on the what-if when we're trying to pass something in totality for our city. So I hope you can respect that. And I'm just one voice, so. Margaret, anything to what was just exchanged that you might have to add?
Yeah, I, I think the, just the, the point that, the points that Derek made are important to reinforce, which is- to reinforce, which is, it shouldn't stop the property from moving forward and making a comprehensive plan amendment request in the future. So, that's, should, should give the property owner, I think, some assurance that there's no, it won't, it won't stop them in the future. And the properties in the little finger that remain white are because there are current, current proposals in play at this point.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Call the question.
Okay. Okay, so, so there's been a motion in a second. Do we want to restate it to be clear, or are we clear?
Yeah, because I like what Derek said, that we change if, that we don't do anything permanent and definitive.
Yeah, so the, the motion is to transmit both packages, adding in the Little Hickory amendments to the, to the second ordinance. There was no discussion about the, the other, the dangling annexed properties, but at this time, my recommendation is just to adopt, to transmit as is. If, in the interim period, Ms. Crespo wants to come in and can give us an indication of where they're going, maybe, with the property, even if an application hasn't been ready, then perhaps we always have the option to pull it, those properties out before adoption.
Okay. Okay.
So, we can't put a footnote in and just?
At this time, it's, you know, it's more of a situation, for instance, all the, the properties that Ms. Crespo identified that are in white, they're pending applications in. Now, it doesn't mean those applications will be approved, and if they're not approved, we'll have to go back in and, and change the map to bring them into, to Benita Springs land use category as well, but at least there's something in line, and we're not, we're not taking any action on those while those private petitions are going forward. What we have now is the potential of a private petition, but it's not, not ready. And, you know, it'll be maybe up to a year before it gets submitted, and then a year while it gets processed. So, that's a long time to not take action on this.
And if we add that asterix, as Laura says?
I don't know what that asterix would be.
No, no, but let's say that we did. Let's just say we add, added that asterix, not knowing what the asterix was going to be, does that open us up for future asterixes down the road? How's that for a word?
Since we're speaking in metaphors, I'd say yes.
And that's, I don't think what we're looking to do here.
Correct.
I think we should
Yeah.
...handle it in total, complete the process that we've been working on for two years. We already know what happens if you don't annex the property and incorporate it into our thing, and we, and we know that even in other parts of the city that are not being affected by these annexed things, anybody could come in and say, "I want a private amendment to the comprehensive plan," and there's a process in place. So, I, again, I don't think that there's any prejudice in this regard, but we just need to get the whole picture. So, I think, I'm voting in favor, and I think Derek's direction is a good one.
Counsel, anything else? Anybody?
Will the land use that we're tying to it adversely affect what you guys are trying to do?
The DRGR and the natural resource that would be brought into are very similar to the Lee County categories, but there, there are some variances to the language between the different comprehensive plans, so they're not exactly the same, and we did feel that the Lee County categories were more beneficial in terms of how the Lee Plan explains allowable uses and how they're determined.
And not to put you on the spot, Alexis, but I guess I will. Sorry about that. What, what in particular, and we're not, I'm not, like I said, here to play hardball, what would be the issue, or issues, hypothetically, speaking?
We would like to, in terms of your natural resource protection category, have that be based upon jurisdictional wetland lines instead of loose aerial views of what the limits of wetlands would be. There's also the, the key difference of mining and how that's treated in DRGR in Lee County versus the city, is there is some historical mining areas as well as existing mining outside of those city parcels, but there's, there's differences in those key use areas.
Okay. If you could just hang on just for a second. Derek or Dr. Banyan, any comments on what she just said?
I don't really have anything to do with it.
Okay, and if not, no worries. I just, I'm trying to be complete and final here, painstakingly. Dr. Banyan?
Yeah, I don't have anything else.
Okay, okay. Counsel, anything else?
So, when you guys come in for a change later, if we do adopt it the way it is now, could they ask for what they're losing by us adopting this now?
No, you'd have, I'd have to know what those changes are, and, and they would, of course, I think what, I don't think, I don't want to, I don't want to put words in their mouths that they would, wanted to conduct a mining operation out there, but that is, that is a distinction between it. And sometimes what we may consider mining under our comprehensive plan may actually just be lakes for development and someone else's scheme. So, the, it's, it's really hard to parcel those issues, and we're not, we would have to make changes to our entire DRGR policy in order to fit this in today. In other words, we, we don't have any data or analysis or any support for making the changes with respect to one parcel, other than to just pull that parcel out and say we're not going to make the change. I don't know if that answers the question. I don't think it does, but.
Mike? No, I mean, I, I think.
But Amy pointed out there's a process involved.
There's a process involved.
And then that's what they would do at the time. Correct, Derek?
Correct.
Even if they tried to have the project under Lee County, there's a whole process involved. I call the question a second time.
Okay. We're calling the question for the second time, and I'm going to give last call to anybody on council for about the fifth time. Okay. Roll call, please. Oh, go ahead, no, Jesse, go ahead. In under the gun.
It's such a, it's such a big piece, I hate to do this, but at the same time, the thing that Derek just said about the potential for legal action, that, that type of thing, it gets me, you know, a little trigger, trigger shy, because we've been there on this exact type of thing before, and pulling out an individual parcel, I don't know if that's necessarily the fairest way to do it, and I don't like the idea of a DRGR policy change on the day of.
Correct.
This is something really, it's not that I don't want to consider. This is something that if we were going to, you know, a DRG policy change and changing this entire thing the day of, that can't happen on the fly, me. So, I'm, I'm with Amy, I think.
Yeah. No, and Alexis, and I'm, and then I am going to call the question. Alexis, and I'm not, please, I'll quit apologizing. Is there a reason that we waited up until this point to find out about this? Or a strategy, or a miscellaneous, whatever, however you want to respond?
We were engaged by LSI and Don in March of this year, and doing the due diligence on the property came across the map, so he wasn't formally noticed that this was happening, and we acted when we found out.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, counsel, really, 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 last call. Roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
And I guess I'll add my own asterix. Please know that the city absolutely wants to work with you. This isn't meant to be presidential. We just painfully need to wrap up this thing. So, thank you. We look forward to working with you. We really do. So, thank you. Okay, what's next? Do we, do we need a short recess?
Yeah.
Do we need to click on the link above to get the full package? Do we need to do any of that stuff? Do we want to do a quick break?
No, but you know what just dawned on me with that thing?
What's that?
Okay, so, remember when I was running the mines through the wringer about that property, the joining properties? If this was, if this type of thing was in place, that would stop that type of thing from even happening at all. So, anyhow.
Everybody good to keep going?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move along. Roman numeral seven, the consent agenda. Counsel, there's quite a few items there. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Accept.
Hang on a second. I've got to read this a quick second. There was one thing I wasn't.
Addendum through H.
I'm sorry, Amy, go ahead.
I move to accept the addendum through H.
Yeah, okay. Motion to approve in a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Okay, proclamations and presentations. Seeing none, mayor and council member items. We need to appoint one member to the city of Benita Springs Local Planning Agency to fill a vacancy on the board, green sheet number 20-08232, and who we have before us is Bruce Galloway and Gary Gambrell. And I'm sorry, are either one of them here, or have they indicated they'd like to speak, Arlene?
They have not indicated they'd like to speak.
Okay. So, I guess at this time, counsel, if we can, yes, or anybody want to speak?
One person was on one of our, remember, there were two names?
Yep.
Or was he just applied for?
He tried last time. Yeah. Gary Gambrell, he's.
Are we, I mean, both have very impressive resumes. I don't know either man, so does anybody? Can anybody?
He tried to get on zoning last time around. He's got a really good academic resume, and he's, I know he is either currently or formerly was the HOA president of the preserve, or, yeah, the preserve.
Yeah, they attached the resumes. They both are very impressive.
He's active, I mean.
I might add that the Galloway is a retired land use planner.
Yeah. Yeah, the other, the other person has direct experience on, yeah. We have, we have the resumes. We could all evaluate them and figure out which one we're going to vote for.
Or do, or do a little campaigning up here.
No, I don't think so.
I said it that way on purpose, Amy, absolutely. We, we've seen the resumes. We don't need to grandstand. Counsel, why don't we vote? Thank you very much.
Could be hours to tally.
Yeah, we have seven whole ballots to count. We'll see how long it takes. We'll be okay.
Think there'll be a runoff?
Yeah.
We don't have to wait on Collier County tonight, so.
No.
Aren't we going to text anybody?
If it's less than 0.5%, then it triggers an automatic recount. If not.
Can I send you all text messages while we're voting? Oh. Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Bruce Galloway, three. Gary Gambrell, four.
Okay. Thank you very much. Congratulations. All right. Public hearing. Derek?
Next item is a second reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $5.1 million in principal amount of debt obligation to finance the acquisition of approximately 248 acres of land, providing for a covenant to budget an appropriate legally available non-ad valorem revenues to pay the principal of redemption premium, if any, and interest on the debt obligation, providing for rights of holder of such notes, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. So, this is, this is one of several items tonight. This is, this is the ordinance author, required by the charter in order to incur the debt to finish the settlement for the BG mine, but it also is the acquisition price for the land known as Benita East 278, which is going to be utilized for a water quality project.
Okay.
So moved.
Counsel, I was going to say, what's your pleasure? So moved?
Second.
And a second. Counsel, is there further discussion?
Any public hearing?
And, and any members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item is, at your last meeting, or at your, your budget meeting, you authorized the renewal of the annual stormwater assessment. We have the resolution on that for your, for your action today. As was, as pointed out, I think, earlier in the public hearing, the maximum is $50, but it is a sliding scale, and you've previously approved mitigation abilities for small lots and for the larger subdivisions if they come in. At this time, nobody has come in requesting that, just for your notification, but the resolution's before you. We're required to adopt an annual resolution indicating the maximum amount and certifying the tax rolls.
Point of clarification, do we still have a lawsuit on this, or is that done?
We do. I've been playing phone tag for a couple of weeks with the CDD's council, following the, the meeting in which Mr. Cox spoke, saying they requested an alternative mitigation strategy. I indicated that, based on the council's direction, we would be amenable to an alternative direction, but I have not received any correspondence or communications back, other than just trying to set up a call.
Okay. Thank you. Chris? No? Okay.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Then this motion to approve in a second, is there further discussion? Roll call, please. Jesse?
I, we know where I'm going on this. It's a regressive tax. It hoses my district, and the idea that it's $50, once again, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, you know, just because, you know, folks don't realize that their people where $50 is a big deal. I mean, I'm not surprised, but I'll just tell you this, when I'm hanging out in Rosemary Park, $50 is a big deal. We don't all live on the river, and if you want to represent the people who live in that district, in the middle of that area, I think it's important that you go to bat for them. And you know what? I can't, with a good conscience, vote on something that's going to disproportionately hurt the people I represent, not in my DNA, so I'm a no.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, before, before calling the vote, we had numerous public comment at the beginning of the meeting, so we can just incorporate their comments, but I would see if, because it is under public hearing, if there are any new people who didn't speak earlier on this item who would like to, to voice any concerns or speak on it.
Yes. At this time, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this?
Is it new people? Is it people who haven't spoken on it?
I would say that people haven't spoke, because we had, we had people speak on the item earlier, and we can just incorporate their comments.
Gotcha.
Robert Allen, I'm speaking on behalf of the membership of my community, if that's okay. I'm always disappointed in the lack of participation, whether it's in the city or whether it's in my own community. I do know, in fact, even though I've reached out to members to be here, they're not here. Our community consists of renters, snowbirds, and full-time residents, which is small. Didn't come prepared for what I'm opposing, proposing now, is when this comes up on the agenda again, what I will do is I will bring names and signatures of the membership that is in favor of the stormwater utility, and I will present it to the city clerk. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mayor and counsel, for the record, there is no virtual public comment at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak? Okay. Counsel, any further comments?
Well, I'd like to just mention to Councilman Purdon that maybe he speaks to somebody, maybe Matt Feeney, because his district actually benefits disproportionately from this.
No.
And they also pay disproportionately less.
That's just not true.
Okay, well.
But I appreciate you trying to tell me about my district.
You're welcome.
We can vote.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
No.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
No. And before we move on, when I was looking at the consent agenda, I apologize, in the abundance of caution, and I know we're going backwards here, on item H, there is one of those groups that I'm familiar with, having met at the Florida League of Cities and the Florida League of Mayors, and that would be item H on our-
Yeah.
On consent agenda, thank you. So I would like to abstain on that, please.
Green sheet, three, four.
H, yes, yes, thank you. Green sheet 20-08234. And I apologize, I should have done that earlier, I was scrambling for it, but I didn't see it in time, so thank you.
And just for the rest of the council, the mayor did discuss this issue with me, he's had, he's had business communications with one of the, the three firms that have been shortlisted, but technically does not meet the standards for an actual conflict, so we can either amend the minutes to reflect that he recused himself, or we can revote on the item, whatever the council's pleasure is.
Right, there's, there's no conflict, but just-
Why don't we just re-vote?
Playing it out there, I, I just want to stay, not vote, abstain, for item H.
Then I would say reconsider the vote, would be the appropriate, so.
Motion to reconsider.
Okay, and I'll second that. Okay, counsel, further discussion?
Do we have to vote on it again?
I guess so, I'm sorry.
First, we're going to vote to reconsider, and then, and then you'll vote on the item.
All right.
Sorry about that, counsel, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
And now, and now you'll, you'll vote with the mayor recused on the adoption of the resolution for the selection committee's recommendations.
For item H, thank you.
So moved.
And a second. Thank you, counsel, roll call, please.
Can we just do unanimously? Anybody object? Because we all already said yes.
It's fine.
Okay, thank you, everybody, sorry about that. Okay, we are going to move on now to what, Derek? Item C?
The next item is C. This is, consider a resolution approving the reinstatement of the master concept plan for Angler's Paradise. If you recall, this was, this is the property for the Northwest Link and the Quadrant Plan at the Benita Beach Road and US 41 intersection. There had been previously proved, I think in 2009, as a PD redevelopment, our, our rules on master concept plans is that they expire after five years. The applicant came in about the same time as the city was moving forward with the, the visioning plan to reinstate that. There was a moratorium put in place, there was a relief mechanism placed by the city council in order for, for relief, they submitted and were denied by the city council. But we have been in, in negotiations with them, there was a, a division of administrative hearings case filed against the city, which, which held up our comp plan and the Benita Beach Road vision for quite some time. Ultimately, as we move forward toward the settlement, they voluntarily withdrew that case. We were able to come up with a plan, working with Mr. Feeney, where the property owner and us have, we entered a new settlement agreement last fall, would provide for us to acquire the right of way that we want. We are working with the, the parcel adjacent to them, which is the Publix, to get some land for them, but essentially will allow us to create the, the link on that northwest corridor. What is required, though, is not only that they reinstate their master concept plan, but we ask them to amend their master concept plan, so that they can continue to have their development without the need for us to engage in a taking. In other words, we're going to pay them the, the value of their land, but we're not going to take, pay for entitlements which have been taken. So there's a number of deviations and other things in order to accommodate a road going through the middle of their project at this time. And so, if you have any other questions, I don't see any of the applicant's representatives here, but, but maybe Jackie can give you a little bit more background on the actual project.
This is a settlement agreement.
Yes, this is part of the settlement agreement.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution consistent with the settlement agreement.
Second.
Yeah, I, I would like to just, we're satisfied with the project, too, even though that was already, the, the master concept plan was already approved, it's just that they didn't follow up on it. So generally, it's the same one that was previously, previously approved, but we got our road through it, and we had to make a few accommodations. Does that summarize this?
Yes, good afternoon, for the record, Jacqueline Jensen. Even before the settlement agreement took place, the applicant did work with us on removing some of the uses we were concerned about. So, from that standpoint, we are satisfied with that, and we process the changes consistent with the settlement agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any public here on this one, but it would be a public-
Sure. Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Counsel, any further discussion? Okay. There's been a motion in a second, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay. Do we need a short recess?
Yes.
Probably a good idea.
All right, it is, um-
Short one.
10:17. Be at 10:30, how's that?
Yeah, that's good.
All right. Okay, looks like everybody's back, we will reconvene. We are going to move on to city attorney's items, but Arlene, I think you had one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Before we start, if we could go back and have a formal vote and roll call on the appointment of the LPA designee, we, we did say congratulations, but we do need roll call.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second to approve the LPA results, election results, if you will. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Great, thank you, Arlene. City attorney's items, Derek.
Well, you guys haven't heard from me enough tonight, or today, so here's a, here's another item. This is, at, at your last meeting, we discussed, we went, actually, two meetings ago, I'm sorry, we, we went out for bids to get proposals for terms of the, of the respondents to that for the, for the acquisition of the BE 278 property. Truist Bank had the best financing terms, they had a good prepayment penalty if we decide to pay it off in full quickly, and it, it gave us a fixed rate for a long period of time. And Wrights here, she can give you the details on the actual financial proposal, but we are recommending at this time that we go with that program, and it's been reviewed by our bond counsel, the, the loan agreement, and I, I've reviewed it as well, I'm fine with it going forward.
And additionally, Mayor and council, our consultant, Julie Santa Maria, is available by phone, should we need any additional questions from her as well.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Ann.
Good morning, Ann Wright, Finance Director. The proposal that we did receive from Truist Bank is a fixed rate loan, 2.49%, 15-year, with the first two years interest only, and then amortizing after that for the, for the total.
Okay, counsel?
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve in a second? And we allow public comment?
Yes, no, this is not a public comment item.
No, I just, like-
The prepayment penalty, if prepaid within the first half of the loan term, it's a 1% penalty, and if it's prepaid in whole, after the first half, there's, there's, without penalty. And Julie Santa Maria calculated that, based on the interest rate that they were offering, the next lowest interest rate was 2.95% that we received, that within about two years, we would have already saved the interest, in, in interest savings to actually pay a 1% prepayment penalty.
I just have some, I mean, I'm going to vote in favor of this, but could you just educate me into the strategy for just paying interest for two years? That's one thing. And I know that this is not, this is taxable, because it's, we're not pledging our full faith and credit, is that the rule for?
Correct, it's, it's not, other non-ad valorem sources are, so, we're not, it's not, it doesn't require a referendum.
Okay. But, but the reason why it's taxable is because we're not pledging valorum, ad valorem taxes?
The reason why it's, it's taxable is primarily because the project itself is more of a public-private partnership, because there is a license on the property which allows BE 278 to remove the topsoil, that, that could be construed as private benefit and could, could make it ineligible for tax-exempt financing, but at this time, the tax-exempt rates and the taxable rates are, are equally matched, so there isn't, there isn't a huge savings to be had.
But in, but in the future, like, for another piece of property that we're looking at, that, that would probably be tax-exempt?
Correct, and if we were to do, when, when we get to the point of actually programming our own improvements on this project, on this property, those would probably be tax-exempt as well, because we'll, those will be purely public interest projects.
Okay, and then, back to the question, why did we have the provision where you only pay interest? Is there any?
Yeah, that was actually Julie's suggestion, because for these next two years, we still are paying on our 2011 debt, and so after that time, it'll be less of a debt burden to the city.
So it's a, it's a benefit, that, I understand that. Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ann. Counsel, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question.
Red.
Well, I think it was Chris Corey brought up about the possibility of looking at borrowing money on a long-term and all that. Would seem to me, if we really analyze, if we do that next year or so, which I think is when you'd want to do it, you, I would thought you would have lumped this into it, too, pay it off, that 1% might be a detriment to that?
We, we did look at those possibilities, and the proposals were for fixed and variable, I believe that we did receive some variable terms as well. I think part, there's a couple issues. One, we have an existing debt service that's going to be paid off, that is not refinancable, if I, if I'm correct. And the other part of this is, if we are, it's not just financing this issue, but it, for particularly some of the, the big stormwater projects, we're still in the, in the programming phases of those, planning them out, it could be a year or two before we even have an idea what we're going to be spending. So it may be some time out before we take a big borrowing to really, to really get our hands around it. So that, that's, that's part of the calculus. This gave you the maximum flexibility, it allowed you to pay it off quickly if you wanted to, but you didn't have to start looking immediately for new financing sources, because it was a reasonable term and fixed, so you had some surety there.
And Mayor and council, we do have a minimum of a year before we're able to move into phase two of our FEMA grant. We have to get through the cost-benefit analysis process first, we've just recently brought forward an RFP for that engineering service to be done, we have to submit that to FEMA, and we've indicated to the property owners of that larger project that we would need to be approved for phase two before acquisition can occur.
Okay. Counsel?
I believe you had a motion in a second, so I think you're just-
Yeah, I just, no further comments? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Okay. Wow. Listen to that, huh? Summer storms in Benita Springs. Derek, anything else?
Nothing else on that item, thank you.
Okay, or anything else? You're good for the moment?
I'm good.
Okay.
Keep my mouth shut.
No, that's good. You and me have a hard time with that, so that's okay. Arlene, city managers' items.
Thank you, Mayor. We wanted to bring forward, we, staff was directed at the last meeting to work with Capital Strategies Consulting, Inc., to bring back a proposed contract. City attorney did speak with Carolyn Ashley directly, the, this proposed project does keep the same annual fee of $60,000, paid in equal monthly payments, and its initial term would be September 1st, 2020, ending August 1st, 2021. The automat, there would be a clause for automatic renewals and additional terms each year with the same precedent, precedent contract, and either party may cancel within 30 days of the expiration of the contract.
Okay, so in some of the, some of the changes we made to the, to the contract, we made this continuing contract, but based on Councilmember Purdon's comments last time, we, we shortened the term of the initial year, so that there would be a level of experience with, with Capital Consulting in, in year one, at the, at that turn, time, at the end of the, the first session, they could give a report, and if, if the council's happy, then we can renegotiate for the next term and continue, that way it'll, it'll constantly be a renewal that comes up at the end of session, so that, that you guys and, and them can work together on what the, what the next year's proposals will look like, and adjustments and fees, things like that can go forward as well, so.
Okay. Counsel?
Most soon to approve.
Second. Is there further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Carolyn Ashley. Okay, item B, Arlene.
Yes, Mayor, for this next item, I'm going to ask Ann Wright to come forward, this is a continuation of our discussion of the debt, and this is, approve the budget resolution to amend the budget, the issuance of debt and acquisition of land. We're here if you have any questions.
Ann Wright, Finance Director, this resolution is putting in place the budget, as Arlene mentioned, and it will be in the capital projects fund to provide for other financing sources, proceeds from bank loan, that's the funding source, for $5.1 million, and then the expenditure will be a capital project, land acquired for stormwater purposes, 248 acres.
Okay. Counsel?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion to approve in a second, counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Great, thank you, Ann. Arlene?
Thank you. As we stated at the last budget hearing, every council meeting will have an opportunity to continue discussion and updates to our FY 2020-21 budget review, and at this point, Ann, if you could give a brief summary of the updates we've have provided as well, and then also if there's any additional direction from council regarding the budget or discussion or questions for follow-up, we're happy to assist with those as well.
Okay. Ann Wright, Finance Director, the green sheet also covers information that was requested at the August 3rd council, or budget council meeting, and if you have any specific questions about that, please, please give me a call, I'd be happy to respond to those. The very last exhibit, or the attachment D, is a summary of the changes to the city manager's draft budget. The items that are referenced in yellow are the items that are changing, and in the first section, that deals with the revenues in the general fund and the gas tax fund, those changes are to adjust the city manager's budget to the state estimates. The state estimates were released on July 27th, and that was after we had already prepared the budget book materials, so we're adjusting accordingly, based on what the state's estimate given. The situation that we have this year in the, with the economy and concerns about the state revenues, and knowing that the state has a team of economists and analysts that are looking at these numbers, feel comfortable that these are the numbers that we should use for our budget purposes. The other two items down below deal with expenditure adjustments, and they were discussed at the, the first one was discussed at the meeting to increase the pay-for-performance at the, the first one was discussed at the meeting to increase the pay-for-performance by $10,000, increase what was budgeted, and then also requesting or recommending the increase in the COVID-19 expense at the time. Again, the budget was drafted, we had barely incurred $5,000, but we incurred, we're up to $10,000 now, so not knowing, again, the uncertainty of what that cost should be, we're recommending to move that, or making that budget from 5,000 up to 25,000, add 20,000 to it.
Okay, Counsel?
Motion to approve?
Second. Okay, there's been a motion to approve in a second. Counsel, is there further discussion? Amy?
I just was gonna ask a question. What's the status of the negotiations for Arlene's potential increase to her salary? It's not included in here? What's happening with that?
No, no, Councilwoman, at this time, it's not. I've asked for some additional information from some neighboring cities, and then I will be communicating with the Mayor on, once I receive that information.
Okay, thank you.
All's been quiet.
Well, I didn't hear anything, so I said, we didn't forget about it, did we? I didn't think so.
Can I get the score sheet?
Arlene, did you forget about it?
No.
Okay, just checking. No, no, but yes.
Did you get one? I don't know if the new members got one or not, but I know I did not receive a score sheet, so I, whatever the...
Evaluation.
Evaluation?
Yes, I will make sure that one gets sent out.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Anything else for Ann?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Do we have to vote?
We have to vote.
Uh, roll call, please.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Thank you. Arlene, you're moving right along.
Thank you. Before I move to the COVID-19 update, I did want to advise Counsel that your final budget hearing is September 16th at 5:05 PM. We did want to ask Counsel, since your city council meeting is that morning at 9 o'clock, typically our last and final budget hearing is a shorter meeting, is it more convenient for you all to move the meeting to the evening at that time? We just wanted to provide that option to you and to give enough adequate time for advertising.
To move the September 16th meeting from the morning to the evening? I think it's a winner.
Just after the budget hearing at 5:05, we could start at 5:30 or 5:45. Typically, that meeting is, moves fairly quickly.
Sure.
So we just wanted to provide you scheduling that option.
With the, Counsel, is that okay?
Second.
Yes.
Any objections, Gibson? Councilman Gibson on a workday on a Wednesday, moving it to the evening, okay? Very good, okay, that's great. Do we need a motion for that?
No, we have direction, we'll advertise as such.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arlene. Anything else, Arlene?
Just to give you a little bit more of a continuing update on COVID-19, I did receive a call from the Florida Department of Emergency Services. We have been issued, as you saw earlier in the consent agenda, an opportunity for subgranted reimbursements for COVID-19 expenses, so we do have a direct contact now through the Florida DEM. I have put them in touch with Ann and her team as well, so we're gonna continue to track that process for any reimbursements we should be receiving. We did want to continue to inform the public that Lee Cares Phase Two is still operating. Folks can go to leecares.com or call 239-533-CARE. Individual assistance is still available, and if you previously received individual assistance as a household, you can receive it again in Phase Two. So we are also continuing to work with Lee County on the procurement of the PPE that was approved under our allotment, and we're working under their process for their reimbursement, as we're sub-respecting of that as well.
Okay, and, Arlene, you and I had discussed this during the break, I know it's not on the agenda here, but we've had some scheduling issues with getting our picture taken, our official Counsel picture, and I think, to try to be helpful to Councilman Gibson, we were looking at 3 o'clock, thinking this meeting might go long, but my understanding is that's really not a help at all to him, in fact, it's a hindrance at 3 o'clock.
And it doesn't work for me.
And it doesn't work for Laura. Can we, can it work at 5:30? Does 5:30 work?
6 would be a little bit better.
For everybody.
Where?
At City Hall? Because, Arlene and...
Isn't City Hall locked, or no?
We will have, for the picture, we'll have staff there, and we're just, actually demolition of certain areas have started, so we're just gonna direct you just to the council room, but let us work for...
Should we wear hard hats?
Yeah, how do you fill our hard hats in?
Well, after Friday, everyone in the building will have a hard hat on if they go into the building, and closed-toed shoes, so, and long pants. So, let me just, can we hold 6 o'clock, and let me just confirm with Laura?
Okay, is that okay for everybody?
We're saying 6, then?
6? 5:30? No.
Is there a reason we can't do it with an iPhone?
No, oh, okay, all right, I thought you closed at 5, I'm sorry, okay.
So 5 o'clock?
Fine. I don't know why we couldn't do it at 5.
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock?
6 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
Why can't we do it now?
Why can't we do it now? Because the photographer's not available now.
Right.
Okay, but we're all here.
I get it, but the photographer's not available. So 6 o'clock tonight at City Hall. Bring your smiling faces, Counsel.
Yes.
Thank you.
To approve.
All right, we will get that done. Sorry to take that time, but that's important, we've had some issues with that. Okay, Mayor and Counsel reports. Amy?
I have a couple of things. This is what happens when we're supposed to stay at home. I do a lot of Zooming. I did have a telephone call with Phil Dutcher from NCH right after our last meeting because I wanted to follow up on some questions that I had, and he was very helpful in sort of giving us, me insight into the situation in Collier County, and at that time, he did say that they're seeing a fall-off in cases and hospitalizations, so at least from their experience in Collier County. He also said that NCH stood ready to help the people in the disadvantaged areas. I had asked him a question to get us more specific information about deaths in Benita Springs, and that has to go through the Department of Health, and I just haven't followed up on that. Also, and I think maybe Jesse might report on this also, is that I participated in the Southwest Florida EDC, where Jesse and I are both liaisons, and there was a new structure that was identified by Tiffany Esposito, and there was a board officer turnover, and I look forward to learning how this new structure impacts our interaction with the EDC. So I'm gonna set up a separate meeting with Tiffany to be informed about that. As you know, we're, the way it was working is that we were automatically put into what was called a premier category, but I'm not exactly sure, you know, what that means in regard to services to us, so I think that needs some follow-up. Third, I want to give a shout-out to all the, you may or may not know that, again, after our last meeting, I got involved with mask-making efforts that has been done in various communities throughout Benita Springs, and I have to say that I was, we've had a remarkable response from our residents who are helping to provide that to, again, our disadvantaged areas. I am a liaison for my own community, I know that Chris Curry's wife is the liaison for Benita Bay, I think there's definitely an effort out of Hunter's Ridge, Sherry Mink, and Cedars Ridge, and I don't know who's the liaison for that. And just to give you an example of how our Benita citizens are coming forward is that I put out an appeal for help in Pelican Landing, maybe 10 days ago. We've already delivered 150 masks that were hand-sewn, and we're going into our second week of organization, but in addition to these sewers that are operating all over Benita Springs, we have the continued assistance of our care agencies, which I want to recognize because I'm not sure they were fully recognized in the reporting that was done in recent, recently, and that's, a shout-out to Benita Assistance, New Horizons, Literacy Volunteers, Cafe of Life, Love Inc., the Salvation Army, and United Way. All these people are in direct contact with citizens in need, they know who needs the help, and they're doing it, and they're the conduits through which we're delivering these masks and educational materials. And then I want to just say congratulations to all those who have won the elections from the primary. It was kind of fun to get up this morning and find out who won and who didn't win, and I couldn't believe there was a runoff. I thought, oh my God, this is all over. And I don't know about anybody else, but it's a sense of relief that most of this is over. It's been hard for the candidates, it's been hard for those of us who want to be informed citizens and want to make good choices. But again, congratulations to all those that came forward, the winners and the losers, and I think we have a good team that we can work with, and of course, we all have to get out and make those personal contacts with the people that are representing Benita Springs. Again, thank everybody that won, and that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you, Amy. Jesse?
I also wanted to shout-out the Outreach Committee for Mask and Nudos Week. Really, really good stuff going on with all the nonprofits that Amy mentioned, and also, I'd like to mention that Omir Drawr, who must thousands and thousands of masks too to give out, so that should be noted. Tony Lee's doing a great job, Chairman of Outreach Committee, so I wanted to commend him on that. The last meeting that I had in City Hall was last Friday, and it was with Phil Flood from South Florida Water Management District. I did it at the building, and he wanted to do it at the building, because it was kind of, to me, it was fitting that the last meeting that we had there was gonna be on water, and I think that we have a very good relationship with them. I'm excited to be working with them moving forward. Additionally, I'm gonna be working on a reef project with Lover's Key, and also, it's in conjunction with a couple other organizations, including FGCU as well, so that's gonna be a very good project, I'm excited to get that moving. And I also have a bioreactor field trip that's gonna be coming up, so you guys know all about the bioreactor, I don't have to tell you all about it, but through the course of the last couple weeks, I've met with a number of Commissioners in Collier Lee and other Counsel members in Naples, and we have a pretty, pretty good delegation who's gonna come out and listen to Matt Feeney tell us all about our bioreactor, and we're actually gonna do it over at Southwest Florida Inc. with Tiffany Esposito, and, you know, we're gonna get back with you guys and kind of let you know how that went, but it's just been a very labor-intensive, getting the schedules together from the staff standpoint, so I just really wanted to shout-out staff for making that happen, so, that's all I've got, Mayor.
More than seven schedules to coordinate?
Oh my God, yeah.
Okay.
We got, well, we have, okay, so we've got two Commissioners from Collier, Commissioner from Lee, two Naples Council people, myself, Tiffany Esposito from the Chamber, we have South Florida Water Management District, and FGCU.
Great.
So I mean, it's, there's a lot of, you know, and that's great, because, look, Naples is built out, so if they're gonna develop, that's the type of stuff they could use, right? Lee County, having buy-in from anybody in Lee County, specifically the guy who represents Benita, I mean, that's great if he can champion that, and then, you know, tying in the regional thing with Southwest Florida Inc. is just kind of neat, because, you know, they're trying to get a regional footprint, now they've got, you know, seven electeds and all the city managers and everybody in one room, so I think it's gonna be really good for them.
Great, thank you very much. Laura?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Chris?
I'm good.
Okay, Mike?
I'm good.
Fred?
I'm good.
Okay, I had a couple things. I just wanted to single out a few candidates, and there's a lot of candidates that I could, but, knock on wood, but come November, Benita Springs will have its first-ever state representative in the House of Representatives in Lansing. Congratulations to Adam Batana for winning his race last night. Benita Springs has never had a state representative, so I think that's history-making. Commissioner Ray Sandelli from Benita Springs, I'm picking on the hometown boys here, congratulations. We look forward to your continued service, and not only serving Lee County, but paying particular attention to Benita Springs. And we made history last night that, and I went over some numbers last night, but 0.0002% of members of Congress have ever been Republican and African-American, and we're about to change that in Southwest Florida. So congratulations to Byron Donalds. Congratulations to the Outreach Committee for, Councilman Purdon touched on this, on the masks. It was great to see Michael Robinson down at Cafe of Life, and yes, and kudos to the entire committee for their involvement. Everybody has been deeply involved with that, and as I like to tell the committee now, they still ask me all the questions, and it's great, or a lot of questions, I say. I have moved on to a senior advisor role for the Outreach Committee. Councilman Purdon is now in charge, so. And then in terms of, and we've touched on it, on the bioreactor, I'd like to give the city of Benita Springs a round of applause, because the Florida League of Cities recognized the city of Benita Springs for the bioreactor, and we won the state award for environmental stewardship, so, great job, team, great job, Benita Springs. We did it, you know? We've never, we've, we're on the map, you know, and I, as I'll point out with an asterisk, for that little town in between, somewhere in between Fort Myers and Naples, I think this little city, this little town's doing great things, so thank you, everybody. And those are my comments. And Matt, do you have anything to add about the bioreactor and the award, or things, you know, how do we capitalize on this award?